I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's July 11th, 2022 city council meeting. With that, I'll call it over the July 11th, 2022 city council meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make the motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second discussion. Um, under consent agenda, I want to pull item H and then add item I. It is Resolution 2022 dash 45 granting a variance from Minnesota Fire Code 2404 dash point four, fire protection for the business located at 18689 Buchanan Street Northeast, pin number 3233, 2321, 0003.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Favor.
Do you need a second?
If they got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got an agenda.
Um, for item H, is that being pulled entirely?
Yes.
So not to be discussed.
For later, for another time.
For another meeting.
Okay.
Yes, service could not get back to us on the review of the agreement and they asked that they be just be put off. There's just a few little changes they want to make from some of the numbers. They want to make sure those are embedded in this, so we'll put it on the 25th agenda.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
We'll start with presentations, Booster Day presentation.
Hello, I am so excited to be here to officially invite everyone to East Bethel Booster Days, which is coming up this Saturday, July 16th. We have some fan favorites coming back after a few years of mishaps and COVID and abbreviated event last year. We have the car show coming back. I know a lot of people were very excited to hear that. And new this year, um, if you have a car that you want to enter in it, there is going to be a burnout contest. So that, um, will be taking place from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. And the car show is in Booster Park East behind the Senior Center. During that time, we also have a local rockabilly trio playing live music, The Star Chiefs. They're amazing, so I really want everyone to go check them out. Also, starting at 11 will be all of our vendors, um, local businesses, organizations, and we have a committee member who's been working on bringing in artists and crafters for an art and craft fair. So we're really excited about that. 11 o'clock will also be the opening of, we have some inflatables for the kids. We're going to have some just yard games that people can play, um, there in the park. So lots of fun stuff, food provided, well, food sales will be provided by Route 65, Perio's Food Truck, Grumpy's Mini Donuts, and Scoop's Ice Cream and Candy. And as well, the Lions will be selling beer. New this year is a kids and teen clue hunt that kids can participate on their own anytime between 11 a.m. and 7 p.m. They just have to stop in at the information tent in Booster Park West to get their entry forms. And they'll just have to go around and the kids will have to go find some secret words posted around the park. The teens, it's an online app called Our Treasure Hunt where they'll download the app and they have to answer some questions about the park and about the city and walk around the park to get those answers. The first 125 kids and teens that finish that will get a small prize. And then all the kids and teens who complete the clue hunts will get into a drawing for some of our prizes, that for a chance for some prizes. We have some cool prizes that have been donated. The parade is coming back this year and so, as well as the Kitty Parade. The Kitty Parade registration is by 2:30, judging is exactly at 2:30. And the theme is all fun and games. So we're requesting kids dress as their favorite character or part of their favorite video game. And then the Booster Day Parade will follow that at 3 p.m. And the parade is always just from the north end of Palisade to the south end of Palisade. We also put out a request and there is still time for neighborhoods and your streets. Get your neighbors together, decorate a truck, get all the kids dressed up in costumes, throw out some candy, be a part of the parade. And we will judge and the best neighborhood entry will win a gift card to use towards their night to unite or a neighborhood block party. So they can register by just sending me an email at ebbboosterday@gmail.com. And as long as I have that by Wednesday, so I can put them into the lineup, we'll be good to go. We also have live music, Scott Snyder, um, and his friend Mike will be playing from three to five in Booster Park West. And our headline band is the Southern Express Band, which will go on stage at six. And at 5 p.m., the East Bethel Bandits, our hometown baseball team, is coming home to Booster Park and going to be playing against the Brahma Snappers at 5 o'clock. And then fireworks at dusk. So that, other little things going on in the parks that we just really invite everyone to come out and be a part of this fun day. We're excited to kind of, we're using this as our rebuilding year after having been shut down in 2020 and a smaller event last year. This wouldn't happen without my great team. The committee is small, but they do mighty things. So I really want to just publicly thank Scott, Ricky, Carrie, Dan, and Bruce for being a part of the crew this year, as well as council members Harrington and Urkel for being our council liaisons, and Wanda for doing some behind the scenes stuff and answering some questions and emails and being available to answer text message in the midst of our meetings. So we appreciate that. And then our sponsors, gotta give a shout out to them. Route 65 is our premier sponsor this year. He is also sponsor, they're also sponsoring the Medallion Hunt, which started today. So the first clue is on the city website. It's also on the East Bethel Booster Days Facebook page. We also have a couple new sponsors this year. Realtor Rob Reinick, he is a presenting sponsor, as well as Cedar Creek Senior Living. And then our other sponsors are the East Bethel Chamber of Commerce, QuickTrip, Coon Lake Beach Community and Senior Center, EJ's Bar and Bottle Shop, Central Truck Service, First Bank and Trust, as well as some prizes that were donated from Blue Sun Soda Shop in Spring Lake Park, Imagine Theater, The Fun Lab in Blaine, and we even have a signed baseball to give away from the Minnesota Twins. If anybody is interested, we will also have a sign up sheet at the information booth. If you're interested in joining our committee next, for next year, we start planning in September of this year. And we would love to have you join us. So stop by the information booth, that's kind of where I'll be hanging out. You can talk to me or talk to, um, you know, Tim and Suzanne can help you get hooked up with us. But we would love to add you to our team. Any questions for me?
Stephanie, I just want to say, uh, you, you and your team did a fantastic job. There's a, there's a lot of work. I, I don't know if these people realize it, but there's a lot of phone calls, a lot of social media stuff. And, um, you guys did a lot and this looks like it's going to fly really good, so I just want to say thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, everybody cross your fingers, no rain. That's my only wish. Thank you so much, we'll see you all on Saturday.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Stephanie, are you still taking donations?
Yes, we will take donations any time of the year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Have a good one.
The second one, 2023 Anoka County Law Enforcement Contract Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have representatives here tonight from the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Jim Stewart. And he will present the proposed 2023 Anoka County Law Enforcement Contract Estimate to Council for Discussion and Comment. The cost of the proposed 23, 2023 contract is estimated to be $1,264,756,000, while the 2022 contract is $1,170,801. The difference between the cost is $93,955, or an increase of 8% for the 2023 service. The increase between 2021 and 2022 was 1.4%. Council has requested to receive the contract proposal from the Anoka County Sheriff's Office and discuss with the Sheriff's Office options related to potential cost reduction for this service. Thank you, Jim.
My privilege. Well, thank you, council members, guests, nice to see everybody again. For the record, yeah, my name is James Stewart and it is my distinct privilege and honor to serve as the sheriff of Anoka County. And I was a little disappointed that Stephanie took off because I am interested in burnout competition. We're using Commander Lenzmeyer's car, however. No, I, I'm privileged to have members of our team here tonight. You can see Chief Deputy Hellwig, Commander Paul Lenzmeyer, and Lieutenant Peters are with us. We want to make sure that, because this is a collaborative effort that goes into preparing our contracts, if you have any questions, I don't want to get caught flat footed and leave you hanging, so I made sure that the brains behind the curtain are all here as well, so that we can make sure that we answer your questions. The quick high level flyover for the contract, I won't get into the details because you've all heard these in the past, but our contracts are full service, do include full response to anything and everything that society and the world can throw at us, including specialty services as well as all related support services. The January 23, uh, excuse me, yeah, January through December 2023 contract does consist of 36 hours per day coverage, including 20 hours per week of CSO coverage. And again, that is 24 hours a day, obviously seven days a week. Before you, hopefully you have the document, you'll see that the personnel cost is broken down and under category 1A, that's one of the more significant changes we've seen for a total of $702,349. And a part of that, you'll see nationally, the anti-law enforcement movement has certainly taken its toll. And so there's a national phenomenon in which we are struggling for recruitment and retention like I would have never, ever, ever imagined, quite honestly. And part of the challenge with that is then, because there's no candidates to hire, we begin robbing from Peter to pay Paul and agencies are stealing from each other. And our, our bargaining units recognize that our staff tended to be paid less than other agencies. And so through successful labor negotiations, they saw some increases. And like probably your contracts, roughly 80 plus percent of our con, or excuse me, our budget is for personnel. And so that's what you see, the costs laid out before you are actual costs that are being transferred or tran, you know, included in the contract related to those personnel costs. So that's one of the largest increase we're seeing in the budget. And that's again, whether you had a police department or the sheriff's office providing services, this is something that's kind of become the new norm as we all compete to try and recruit and retain staff. The contracts that, excuse me, not, not law enforcement, but the labor contracts are now set. So the 24 contracts will be set at 3% salary increase. So there shouldn't be any more significant jumps beyond that. And another thing of note is that because the labor contracts were negotiated in 2022, your 2022 law enforcement contract was actually settled 21. So the salary increases for 2022, you didn't have to cover any of that. So you're, you'll begin paying that increase in 23, but the 22, I guess we'll, we'll call it, you know, that's kind of a gift in having an early contractor signing that up, so that that was locked in at that price prior to that being resolved. Hopefully that made sense. Total personnel costs under that category then is $1,059,464. Section two, under vehicles, we also revisited what our vehicle and other related expenses look like because we were realizing our maintenance costs were down. The vehicles are holding up better than they had historically. And after some extensive discussion with our county highway folks, we were able to determine that we can keep them longer. So the good news is, we were able to then adjust our vehicles. You'll recall historically, you'd see 1.5 vehicles under police equipped vehicles. This year it's 0.83. And that is because we're, again, the cost of the vehicles has gone down. And I guess that's a good thing that maintaining them costs less because they're much harder to get, along with everything else, as I said, with the supply chain. We actually had Dodge cancel about half of our vehicles that we were trying to get. So that kind of forced our hand to revisit in, in other areas as well. Also, we've had to transition to the SUVs because the major manufacturers aren't providing sedans in police packages anymore. So that, that kind of shuffled our overall costs and made us kind of revisit the way we do business. The vehicle, um, section two, sub C2, you'll see the emergency and communications equipment, that category did jump. The others are pretty, throughout the majority of this list, if they're pretty stagnant, I'm not going to go line by line. I mean, you, you've, like I said, you've been through this, I'm just trying to point out significant changes. That C2 category with the equipment, you'll see an increase there. And that is because of one of our providers is Axon. They're the ones who provide our tasers and our body cameras, but we're also transitioning to using them for our squad cameras, so we have a much more integrated system. And to use the, the retail term they offer, bundling. And so by getting all three of those through them, they provide a better service and a better maintenance program. And it creates for a better operational system for us to have that systems, those systems integrated. And so that is now a five-year fixed number through our contract with Axon. But on the upfront, there is again, a slight increase for those services moving forward. So you'll notice that number. Other than that, that's pretty consistent. Our total vehicle costs are at 136,547, which overall, again, is slightly down. Our administrative cost is $118,904. The administrative costs, again, include support, some of the investigative side of things, our purchasing, our training. All of the folks that you even see in the room with me tonight are all included in some of those costs in addition to, again, those support services that we provide. And then, so the last section, total cost to contracting to the municipality is $1,314,916. And then you'll see directly beneath that, less amount received from police state aid annually. We receive dollars back from the state based on the number of licensed deputies that we had in our employment for the previous year. And those dollars are used for training. But because we have included that in our above costs for the city, those checks, if you will, that we get back, we want to make sure we're also giving those back to the city. And so based on the 2021 numbers of staff employed by the City of East Bethel, our return through the police state aid is $50,160. So that gives us an actual net cost to the city of $1,264,756, as Jack had said. Again, just wrapping up, the, the overall increases are based on our actual expenses and as you can hear, are beyond our control. So I'll, I'll push pause and any questions that you may have, if I can't answer, I know we've got somebody who can.
Say, Sheriff Stewart, is there any wiggle room at all in this contract?
The, the flat, the way it's set up now, the, the short answer is no. Having said that, um, we, we've been partners for decades and we want to continue to work with you how we can if the city is truly in a pinch. You know, one of the things that I may propose, I, I say, I can't guarantee what'll happen after January, but once the contract is settled, we, we could, we could negotiate something. And one of the things that we could explore, whether through a workshop or something offline, but, uh, you know, as I talked about our staffing and our turnover, one of the things we might be able to explore is if we had a vacancy, we plug that in for a four-month period. And so the salary savings could be actualized by the city. And I'm just spitballing here, but I mean, we, we, again, we want to work with you if we can.
Sheriff Stewart, would, would an option be to eliminate the CS, uh, CSOs in the, from the contract?
Absolutely, counsel. The, that's certainly an option. That's really up to the city. You need to evaluate what are the services that the CSOs are providing and is it a priority or not to maintain?
I want to make sure it's an option, so.
Jim, one question we have on the CSOs, and I understand you've been having some staffing issues on those as well, is will we be fully served by the 20 hours, uh, the remainder of this year and into 2023 with the CSO contract as it is and proposed?
Yes, uh, the, the short version is, I know that every hour Commander Lenzmeyer is keeping close tabs and they're, they're tracking every hour to make sure we're either, if there's a shortage that it's made up and/or if we can't make it up, then there's certainly going to be deductions or refunds made. We want to make sure that you're getting everything you paid for and more.
And on, on the state police aid, that's the same figure that was used last year? Is that figure unchanged or is that just an estimate on what you expect to receive?
That is, it's always, uh, this early on, it's the state. So sometimes those numbers aren't real clear. That is based on good intel saying it's going to be the same.
My question is, do your deputies always get overtime out here?
It, it's, yeah, in short, yes. It, it's so rare not to have overtime, especially with some of our staffing challenges we're facing right now. It's also very common for them to either get a late call if it's towards the end of the shift or they stumble onto an accident or the, whatever they're caught up in, we expect that they wrap it up, put a bow on it, turn it in instead of turning it over to the next shift. Or certainly we would never tolerate somebody driving by and ignoring something. So there's almost always some of that, but then they also have time for court typically scheduled on their time off and, and those kind of things. So there's always some level of overtime, but we try to keep that as under control as possible.
I get it.
And these numbers are pretty accurate for what the actual overtime costs were?
Yes.
For the years, like previous years or close to tracking?
I don't want to give you, I, I know what's happened in the past, but I didn't get a chance to ask for this year, so.
No. Honorable mayor, and, oh, I'm sorry, the mayor's not here, but counsel, Kevin Hellwig, I'm the chief deputy. And, uh, by my, I, I ran the patrol division for many years. By my estimate, the seven hours is probably low. We haven't studied it a lot, but, um, with, as the sheriff said, with court appearances, those are three-hour minimums. So, uh, a couple late calls and a quarter too easily eats up those seven hours of overtime in a month. You know, it, it's done, just kind of, and summertime's typically busier. But, um, you know, I remember times when you get three, four court notices in a two-week span. So you were, it seemed like you were always at the courthouse, so. It's something that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's high by any means, but, uh, it's a, just a number that's worked for us for many years.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually, Wanda, that went up like about $7,000 over the last year or so.
Yeah, over last year, that's why I was asking that.
No, we.
Direct correlation to sell.
We, we certainly understand the, the labor market as it is now and the competition for finding employees. Can you tell us what the percent increase for the salary increases was in your new contract?
Because the deputies are all at varying levels of their tenure and the, the salaries are typically based on, you know, you get a, a bump or you get your starting pay and then a bump at one year, two year, three year, et cetera. But then there's also longevity after, you know, 10, 15 years, those kind of things. So, um, because they're all at different areas, I think the average was between three and a half and 11 and a half. The low end was really where we tried to improve our recruitment capabilities. The high end, we were fairly competitive, so we didn't feel the need to necessarily see the high end, see a significant jump, which of course creates its own degree of discord. How come they're getting, you know, more? But it, it really is because the lower end or the entry level deputies were not at a competitive wage and that's what they were able to negotiate.
And like you said, if you want to keep somebody, you're going to have to probably pay them a little bit more.
Right. Absolutely.
And I understand you that the 24 contract is set at 3%.
Correct.
Okay. Well, as much as, uh, it is what it is.
Yep.
Yep, and it is our job to provide, that's what our main job is, to provide public safety and roads to the city. So, um, I, and I, I totally understand, I hate to do it to our residents, but we gotta do what we gotta do.
Jim, is the 36-hour time, is that still sufficient coverage for East Bethel?
Yes, you are still in a good place. We've, we've monitored that closely. I'd love to be able to walk in and say, you know, you're so far high that if you reduced hours, but you're in a good place. I, I, I wouldn't recommend, you know, exploring a reduction, but we're also not, at least not in the immediate future, looking for any type of increases. So I guess that's good news.
Yeah, I wasn't approaching that as far as the reduction goes, but just to make sure we were getting the coverage that we need to be getting for our size and the crime statistics here.
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Will you, we want to act on this, or we have to?
No, I, I think this is just a presentation so we can get some answers to some of the questions we had. Certainly thankful for your appearance and, uh, we're still in the preparations of our budget. We'll look at what limited options we have. We certainly understand your situation, everybody's in the same crunch. So this will be an item that we can discuss at our August work meeting and relative to incorporating in our preliminary budget.
What's the timeframe that we would have to make a decision on this contract by?
From our standpoint, obviously, the, the sooner the better. I think legally, you have to be within 30 days of the, the renewal, which would be, you know, December 1st or thereabouts. The sooner the better if we need to ensure, you know, staffing levels, those kind of things, but we're.
So we don't, we don't have to rush then?
Correct, no.
We have August and. I'd say by September, we'd have.
Yeah, generally, we, whatever we present in the preliminary budget is what we get from them for their contract figures.
You're golden there this fall, would be a great timeline. And if you want a member from our team to be at the workshop, we'd be happy to do that as well.
That, that might be good to have somebody there just to review that. But we certainly appreciate your coming out tonight and.
Absolutely.
It's, uh, always a great pleasure to hear from your group. They're a great group to work with and we have had fantastic service. We, we thank you very much.
We're fortunate, we've got a great team that work with us, so thank you.
And I'd just like to add, I've been on the city council for nine years and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I just want to wish you the best in your retirement or whatever you do afterwards. Thank, thanks for everything.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, they're just smiling and nodding.
They're ready to get out.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item C, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. Is that Mr. Yolcom?
Yes.
Okay.
The City of East Bethel has developed a stormwater pollution prevention program as required by the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Program, which authorizes cities to discharge stormwater to the public water system. The goal of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program is to reduce the discharge of pollutants into receiving waters to the maximum extent practical. Some of the implementation strategies that are part of the program include sweeping city streets, inspection of approximately 20% of the city's stormwater basins each year, posting city programs such as Clean Water Day on the city website, conducting this annual meeting, developing educational pamphlets for distribution to city residents, and investigating any reports of non-compliant stormwater complaints. At the annual meeting, city will consider public input, both oral and written, regarding the adequacy of the program. Based on the public input, the city can modify the program as the city determines to be appropriate. Copies of the city's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program are also available on, at, for review at the city hall. With that, staff recommends that city council conduct the annual meeting to consider public input on the city's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Any questions, comments?
Don't everybody rush up at once.
And with that, I'll close the public hearing.
Do we need any further action at this time?
Yeah, that's, is there no further action?
No.
See, I was going to ask you, Craig, um, you know, I'm on the watershed. They, they started a program now where they, where people can adopt stormwater drains. If they keep them open, they'll, they'll put their names on there. I don't know if you guys have heard, heard, heard that one?
Yeah, I've heard of that.
I think of both watersheds are doing that now, so that's, that's kind of a good idea too.
Yeah, I know a lot of cities do it.
Yeah, so if you want to be getting involved in stormwater drain, watersheds, and we'll put your name on a, right on there, so. It's a good deal.
Can I ask a que, two questions actually? One is, where are the stormwater basins at? Are they on all the streets or just some of the streets or where?
They're pretty much scattered throughout the city, but every development, um, has probably one or two. So they're built as part of the developments typically.
Yeah, I know they added some to our street a couple of years ago, but I'm, but I do drive down some streets and I'm like, oh, that, this street doesn't have them.
Yeah, they, they don't typically make you retrofit new ones on existing streets. But all the new developments would have them.
Okay, and who does the inspecting?
Nate and his staff.
Okay, and then my other question is, are you going to have like a booth at Booster Days with information? And the pamphlets or anything like that?
That's a good idea, but I don't think one is planned.
Okay.
No, we, we haven't had one before, but it's not a bad idea to look at incorporating that in the future though.
Yeah, and at the, um, town halls?
He's been at town halls before, those have been out.
Yeah, it's, it's always available to discuss at the town hall. Yeah, it's it's always available to discuss at the town hall, but at some point, maybe the city is going to consider having a booth at Booster Day.
I think that would be good because I think you get a lot more turnout at Booster Days than you do at the town halls. Okay, that's all I have.
And different people.
Exactly.
Is that up?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to item D then, potentially dangerous dog hearing.
Thank you, Tim. Tonight's meeting is to determine by hearing if a potential dangerous dog determination issued by the city administrator to Roger Ricky and Paulette Ricky should be sustained, modified, or removed. The request for the hearing relates to a bite injury incident that occurred on May 31st, 2022. The Inoka County Sheriff's Office reported that the German Shepherd dog owned by Roger Ricky was involved in a bite incident with Mary Blegen in the public right of way near 18689 Buchanan Street Northeast. This is the second bite incident for Mr. Ricky's dogs. The first occurred in 2021, and the bite victim did not wish to pursue this matter further. Since the matter was apparently unprovoked and not under control by the owner, a potentially dangerous dog notice was issued by the Inoka County Deputy investigating this incident. Mr. Ricky's dogs were not licensed at the time of the bite. Mr. Ricky has applied for a dog license for both dogs as of June 28th, 2022. Currently, the dogs are not, their rabies vaccinations are not up to date either at the time of the bite, but the both dogs have been vaccinated as of June 7th. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Article 2, an animal owner is allowed to contest the potentially dangerous dog determination. In this case, Roger and Paulette Ricky, the animals' owners, have requested the hearing. The following are requirements in your packet to determine what the city can potentially do to impose dangerous dog, potentially dangerous dogs' requirements. Staff recommends that city council conduct a hearing relating to the potentially dangerous dog determination and issue a decision regarding this incident pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Animals, Article 2, Dogs, Division 3, and any requirements for the keeping of the dog.
Well, with that, I'll I'll open it up. Is there anybody here who would like to? Would you please come up and state your name and address for the records, please?
Paulette Ricky. 18689 Northeast Buchanan Street. And just to update Jack, the the dogs were within three days of their rabies, June 4th, 2021, and then June 7th, 2021. So we're within three days.
Well, the the ordinance says you have to have them current, though. That's.
Okay, I'm just, at the time that the bite occurred, they were current because they didn't expire until June 4th of 2022.
But they weren't vaccinated until June 7th, though.
They were vaccinated on June the 7th because they originally was June 4th, 2021, which would bring them through June 3rd, 2022, and we vaccinated them again on June 7th, 2022.
So on May 31st, they were still considered.
Yes, because it didn't expire until the 3rd of June.
Okay.
Can I ask something? In the police report, it shows that, that's correct for Holly, what you're saying, but it says that Titan last received his vaccination on 4/25 of 18.
That I, what did, is that what I sent you today, Jack?
That's in the police report.
That's in the police report. What you sent me today was the vaccination. It was done on June the 7th.
And there was, but it, on the bottom of it, it had others. And Roger said he gave the other stuff to Stephanie, and he said he asked her name when he handed it and said he had to give it to Jack.
That was for the license application. There there was no rabies stuff attached to that. I I did check that out after we talked.
Okay, he did. He did leave it here somewhere. They just didn't send it to you then, apparently.
Hold on, I think we might have something. Oh, that's the reminder. Those are just, those are just the reminder that they were past due.
That was in that information that I sent out in the email this afternoon.
Yep.
I don't think there were reminders in there, were there?
It says remind us status report from Ham Lake Veterinary Hospital.
That was in the police report that was filed with us.
Yep, and then on the right side of it, it should give the date that they were immunized.
It says 4/25 of 18 for.
That's probably Titan.
And 6/4 of 21 for six-year-old.
Holly.
And. 4/25 of 18 for the other one. So one is 4/25 of 18.
Okay.
So one, so one was and one wasn't, is what the bottom line is.
And the gal can't tell us. We have a black dog and a brown dog, and she doesn't know which dog it was.
So I have a question. You live on Buchanan Street?
That's where our business is. That's where the.
The business was on Buchanan Street, and that's where this happened?
Yes.
And so the dog was visiting the workplace?
Nope, the dogs are there constantly. They're, that's where their home has always been.
Okay.
And I think, you know, I don't know, Mr. Mayor Voss, and I think Jack's been out to the, our facility as well. And these dogs, they do, they don't do anything. I mean, that's why I'm, I don't know if these, if the dog was provoked, but these dogs, you can, we don't even lock them up when our customers come. And I think you can check, even with your fire department and the Inoka County Police, where they actually come and play with them on their time off as well.
Yeah, the police report did say that it was friendly when the police officer arrived.
Right, and there's, I mean, it's one word against the other if they were provoked or not. We don't know, you know? We weren't there, so we have to, you know. They're not perfect dogs? Absolutely not. And could it have happened? Absolutely. But, you know, based on even their demeanors, when we had them at the vet, they indicated that they would not have been.
Jack, this being the second incident, and the first incident, do we know which dog was involved with that?
No, I think it was unclear at that time. The person that was bitten declined to pursue this in front of city council as part of a hearing to determine if there was a potentially dangerous dog issue involved, so therefore the hearing was not held.
So we don't know which dog was involved?
No. Now, there was, and the other, the the person, the incident occurred and the victim is here, too, but there was a supplemental statement. I think that she did make some identification to the dog, so she can present that.
Any other questions?
Not right now, but maybe after we hear the other side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Mary, you want to? Mary, could you state your name and address, please, for the records?
Uh, Mary Blegen, and it's 1252 185th Avenue, East Bethel.
Can you pull that mic a little bit? People at home, yeah, or, yeah, they've had some issues if people can't hear, so thank you.
So.
Toast here half.
You want to, yeah, whatever.
I had just moved here, so I'm I'm trying to remember the address, and I just moved in the middle of May. This was May 31st. I'm walking down the street in front of Rogers. I didn't provoke the dogs. This wasn't one bite. This wasn't one dog. These were both dogs at the same time biting me. The lighter one was biting the back. The darker one was chewing on my arm. I didn't provoke them. I I was just walking down the street. There's no sidewalks out here. It was traumatizing. And I can't leave the apartment now. There's nowhere to walk. I don't, I don't trust the dogs. I've driven by there, took a picture of the place. The gate was open again two weeks after. Why is the gate open? Why is this even being allowed? He trusts his dogs. He told me his dogs are sweet dogs. They weren't sweet that day. There's a lot of kids that go by there. It was traumatizing.
Any questions from Mary? Or any questions from the council?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, I drove one today and the gate was closed. I saw one dog at the gate, but I didn't stop. I just, I just saw the one dog, so, and he, he looked fine, so. But, yeah, it's got to be traumatizing. Like you said, nowhere to walk and I don't know why we'd have the gate open, so. Okay, okay.
So when the dogs, they, we have a kennel in the shop. Well, I was thinking maybe they should have security instead of using dogs for security. There's a lot of people that go by there, a lot of kids.
Yep.
I'm not here to argue that I was bitten. I was traumatized.
Yeah, I'd seen the pictures, yeah. Yeah. I mean, nobody, nobody should be, you know, walking down the street, get get bit like that. That shouldn't happen. I don't care.
It scared the hell out of me.
I mean, the dogs can be good, but I, that shouldn't happen. That should not happen.
I heard the paws thumping on the grass and I didn't, there's pine trees. I didn't see nothing until boom, they're coming through the pine trees and the growling and they both stood on me. It wasn't pleasant at all.
No.
I don't have any further questions.
I I'm good.
Can you stick around for a little bit?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll close the hearing and open it up to council discussion or a motion or.
You can have a seat now.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, I have a few issues. The first issue is that this is the second incident. Even if the first party didn't want to pursue it, we know that it happened because there's a police report and it states what happened. Even after the first incident, the one dog did not get a rabies shot. Neither dog was licensed, which is part of our code. The dogs have to be licensed. And I would think a responsible owner after the first incident would make sure rabies are up to date and make sure licenses are up to date. There is a gate there. I did drive through there. But if the dogs aren't contained, it's a useless item. I guess those are my comments.
Any other comments?
Oh, we had one, our last dangerous dog hearing that almost mirrors this. Not with the exact circumstances, but it was a a dog's second time. The first time was not brought forth before council.
I just have an issue with somebody can't even walk down the road. I mean, if she's walking down the road, that's, that's unacceptable.
Well, and a lot of the apartment people walk through there.
Yeah, they have nowhere else to walk. I mean, it's just that.
Yeah, they have nowhere else to walk.
I'll, any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion. Anybody want to?
The. As these two incidents mirror each other from the last time, our last motion was to uphold the dangerous dog requirements with items one through eight. So.
That is correct.
And I really don't think that all eight are necessary in this case. I think one, two, six, and seven, maybe number five. But I don't think the other ones are necessary.
So you don't think two?
I don't think three, that they. That the tag is necessary, that the owner provide the insurance, that the owner allow a compliance official on their property to conduct a site inspection are necessary.
Let's see.
Okay, one, it sounds like if they keep it, the gate closed, one would be.
I would say take away one, yeah.
One is already in in place.
Correct.
Two, it, we need to get signs up there.
Yeah, and they should be over there by the pine trees so that people can at least cross the road if they are afraid of dogs.
If they keep the dogs in the gate, then we don't have that problem of them by the pine trees.
Exactly, but.
Oh, I I think one should be sustained. Cause that that includes having the gate closed.
Okay. So we've got one.
And.
Two.
And we are dealing with two dogs versus one dog on the last incident.
And that, that's a pack's nature is to follow.
Yeah, and I'm thinking maybe they need to put a, if their customers enter through that gate, maybe they need to put a buzzer on the gate or something to.
Or an automatic gate.
Well, they they have control of the gate, I assume, so. As far as opening and closing, I'd leave it up to the owners.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't trying to control that.
I don't have a problem not needing a tag on the dog. They're licensed now. The insurance, we've always made them get insurance when there's been.
We have it.
A double bite.
We already have it.
Yeah, I have it, too.
So I I really don't have a issue with keeping all of these.
Yeah, one through eight.
It's.
I think we've kind of set that precedence with the last incident, well, the last two.
Did you want to do that with the exception of three?
No, I think.
Do you want to, somebody want to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion to uphold the potentially danger dangerous dog requirements with conditions one through eight.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion.
So. When reviewing this, who, this is one of the hardest parts of council. We don't like, everybody who has a dog is, the dog is a member of their family. We, making these decisions, we don't do it easily. It's not one of the fun parts of the job, so it's not something personal against the owners. It it's just. Part of city council.
I just have a problem. It's complete strange, stranger, somebody walking down the road and then the dog, two dogs come out. That's, you know, that's a, that's a issue I have. It's, that shouldn't happen, so, I mean, they, they have the dogs. They should be responsible, so.
And who knows what? They may have heard a backfire. They could have been seeing something else. They could have seen an animal. Yeah, but no one knows what happened. But it did happen and it happened twice. So we have to, we have to uphold what, we're here, you made the statement, we're here to keep our citizens safe and protected. It's what dangerous dog hearings are about.
Any other questions or comments?
Just for a point of clarity, if I can, this would apply to both dogs, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Since we don't know which dog.
According to the victim, it, both dogs.
That were on her, yeah.
That's correct.
So as far as the first incident, we don't know.
And I'm just going to state my feelings on this because you guys are choosing to do all eight. I'm, I I agree it's a potentially dangerous dog, but I disagree with all eight, so that's where my vote's going to come from.
Well, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Excuse me? Will the dogs be there?
Oh.
That's a very interesting question.
Do you wanna, you wanna come up here?
As of last Friday, Roger retired and that's why he's not here. He, he left. He went on vacation for a month, so, um, the business is sold. Uh, so the dogs may or may not be there.
Uh, were the dogs part of the sale?
It's personal property, so, no, you don't have to put it in there. We're still talking with the, with the new owner.
Is the new owner aware of these bites?
Yeah, he's an employee of ours.
Oh.
He was the one that took the first call that came in.
Well, it, I.
Chris.
Council members, and if I can, uh, Jack, the question, uh, where are the dogs currently?
I'm assuming they're still on the premises of the owner's property.
Correct.
If they're going to stay on the premises, the designation goes with the dogs, so, uh, if they're going to be on the premises, the new owner will have to follow this. If not, uh, or if he declines to do that, he'll have to give up the dogs.
Okay, but if we take them home?
Then you would have to apply with it. Comply with it and create enclosure on your home property and comply with all the conditions.
Yeah, we have that, yes. We have that, okay. Good to know.
Yeah, with that, we'll move on to item five, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second. I'd like to pull item B as in boy.
Um, and I would like to pull item D as in dog. Uh, with, you got?
We'll do discussion.
Okay. Uh, with that, with the remaining ones, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Brian, item B.
I was, I, I.
Or discussion, I'm sorry.
I'd like to pull item C and D too, but C.
Okay, with A, E, F, G and H, or A, E, F.
They, they've been approved, um, so are we gonna retract it for those?
I'll retract it, yeah.
Fair enough.
With the remaining A, E, F, G and I, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass. Item B.
Uh, item B is the council minutes from June twenty seventh. I was not in attendance and I would like to abstain.
Okay.
So I'll make a, a motion to approve item B of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion made, second and discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Brian abstains. Item C, you wanna go?
Yes, I just wanna welcome our new hire, Emily Jabs to, she'll be our new, um, front desk person and say sad farewell to Cindy. I enjoyed having her here and, um, I wish her all the best. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Can I ask one, I'm sorry, I should ask this in there. When does she start?
July twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth, thank you.
And item D? I'll give you first.
Sad day.
I'll give you first.
Sad day. Mark Ducharme is leaving us and he's been an amazing fire chief and I'm sorry he's not here for the farewell, but bye, Mark. We're gonna miss you.
Well, he's here till October, so I think we have a few more meetings.
Then, I, I assume we'll have a very good send off for him as well before, and some nice recognition from the city for his efforts.
That's true, and as part of the upcoming interview process, when we get the applications in here, uh, I want to bring up a discussion at the next meeting to construct an interview panel that would probably, I'd recommend it be also composed of two city council members for this position.
Um, I'd just like to add on to Suzanne's too. Um, Mark's worked in the fire department or fire system for forty-three years. He's, uh, been, he's been there for fourteen. Um, he's gonna be missed. He's an asset. He knows the city. He knows the people. The people know him, so it's, it's gonna be hard to replace a fire chief like that.
Well, not just the city, but the surrounding cities. I uh, being a, on the laser and going to some of the community meetings throughout the county that a lot of the other fire chiefs uh, look up to him. It's.
And he, uh, he definitely is an asset to the city. It's, it's, it's gonna be a charter to replace him, so. And I just wanna wish him good luck. I know he's looking at moving out of state, so, uh, I hope he comes back and visit. And with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve item D as written.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. No new business, uh, department reports, um, the seven point zero C one, alternatives for enforcement of city codes.
Thank you, Tim. As code enforcement efforts to seek solutions to the problems of property cleanup have had only limited success through the criminal prosecution process, other alternatives that may provide a more permanent resolution of these issues need to be considered. The city attorney and staff have discussed the possibilities of using a nuisance abatement and hazardous building action as another means of achieving these objectives. These types of actions are relatively quick civil actions and will provide the city an opportunity to enter and clean up the property if the property owner does not. If the property owners do not address the issue, the city could enter the property and clean it up either with city public works employees or by contracting with third parties. This is the key distinction and feature in abatement and hazardous building action over a misdemeanor, misdemeanor, criminal hearing or trial. Further, the city would likely be able to assess the cost of the enforcement to the property as part of the property tax collection system. With the criminal enforcement action, the current legal process used to address these problems, the property owner will be charged with a crime and if the property isn't cleaned up during the course of the criminal proceeding, it would be convicted of a misdemeanor. The property owner would likely be placed on probation with the condition being to clean up the property. Theoretically, there's a chance the property owner could be jailed if no actions toward cleanup are taken. However, the city at no point would have the authority to enter the property and clean it up. Based on the extent of the violations on certain properties, it may be that the city would want to pursue the abatement process if property owner inaction continues. Both the civil and criminal courts remain backed up from COVID. However, it is the city attorney's opinion that the civil case would conclude prior to the criminal case. Cause even with a conviction, the property owner will be on probation for up to two years with cleanup being a condition of the probation. Staff requests that city council discuss the option of abatement and assessment over criminal prosecution for those properties and provide direction as necessary on this item for staff's direction. Uh, Chris is here also to answer any questions you may have. We've had some discussions on this. Certain nuisance properties seem almost impossible to clean up. There's one that we've had the court three times and the property's worse now than it ever was when it started. So this may be something we might want to consider going forward in the future as a means of addressing this rather than the criminal prosecution of these cases. And it would be another tool we have to address some of these issues.
Chris, could you give us a general overview of how this would work?
Absolut- absolutely. Um, council members, I think one of the things we're, we're here to talk about is just putting another tool in the toolbox, as, as Jack said. Right now, for the most part, uh, we've been going with criminal enforcement. And, um, very briefly, the individuals charged with a misdemeanor for, uh, keeping a nuisance on, on the property and maintaining that nuisance. Um, those cases take a long time. Uh, they're typically fairly low priority cases for the courts and typically we try to have the charge be the impetus to get somebody to clean up their property. And so the actual hearing or trial gets extended out and extended out being, are you making any progress? You know, well, I cleaned this up. I, you know, I moved this around and then ultimately it gets continued and really what would happen is i- if there's a conviction, they'd be placed on probation and cleanup would be a condition of it. And, uh, as, as Jack stated in the reports, theoretically, uh, a person could be jailed if they didn't clean it up, but realistically, we, we don't find that that, that occurs, so. Uh, what the abatement process provides is a way to get the city authority to go in and clean up the property if the owner refuses after multiple notices to clean up the property. And one of the, the features of this is, is it's, it's actually quicker than the, the criminal process because we provide notice thirty days to clean it up. If they don't, then we initiate an action and, uh, go about getting court authority to go in and clean up the property. And likely the city will incur costs on the front end of this, uh, likely hiring, uh, folks to clean up the property and, um, of course, hiring me to go get the court order to, um, to abate the nuisance on the property. That being said, uh, the key feature that an abatement process provides the council is that you will eventually be able to collect that by assessing the cost to the property, uh, via property taxes. So while there are some front end costs to the council, it would overall, uh, the goal would be to make this a cost neutral process. And, and realistically, we've found that it's the best way to ultimately get a property cleaned up because the abatement process applies to the property. The criminal process only can punish the individual. At no point does the city ever get authority to go in or to contract somebody to go in and actually clean up the problem. And a lot of this is just junk that's assembled on properties, junk, junk vehicles, boats, inoperable vehicles, uh, things like that. And, and the necessary step is removal of the items. And if the person won't remove the items within a certain period of time, the city can hire somebody to go in, remove the items and, uh, clean up the property and then, um, ultimately pass the cost of that onto the property owner. So that's the real distinction between the two. And we, we do think it's a faster process than the criminal process.
Do, uh, a lot of other cities use this method?
Yes, a lot of other cities use the method and, and the method does exist within your city code too. Um, and there's also a criminal, or excuse me, a statute, uh, under Minnesota law that allows all cities, all local governments to, to use this process as, as well. One of the, the features I like about the state statute versus the, the city statute is ultimately a judge gives the authority to, uh, go into the property under the city statute theoretically, uh, under the city's ordinance, a hearing officer could, you know, provide that authority as long as certain notice requirements are are met. Ultimately, it's, it's my own preference and my, would be my recommendation to the council. If you're gonna enter a property, it's better to have a court order.
Okay, um, hearing that, I think it's a good process and a bad process.
What would the cost be?
Well, ultimately, uh, we believe it would be cost neutral, but there would be.
To the resident. I mean, do you know about what it would cost?
I, I'm sure it'd be a case by case.
Depends on what they have to get rid of.
I know, but I, I can't, I wouldn't wanna approve something that's gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars either to a resident and.
But we don't know those what ifs.
You don't know what the numbers are gonna be.
But why wouldn't that resident have cleaned up their property when they got the first notice or the second notice or the third notice?
There, there's lots of reasons. What, some of that is their, the, a boat is their treasure. They might not want to get rid of it, um, whether it's,
I, I think some of our ordinances are too stringent as it is, but I, I think it needs to be a case by case basis and I think if the city allow, votes to allow people on a person's property without their permission, I think, um, that's a problem. I, I don't think they should do that.
Well, that's where I was making my statement. I think it's a good idea and a bad idea. Good idea is the city can actually get results on some of these cases that have been drawn out for years and years. Uh, on the other hand, uh, as a citizen, do I want the government coming onto my property and doing what they want? Um, with, with that said, I, I think if we choose to employ this, that it should be reviewed and approved by the council before it is administered.
On a case by case.
On a case by case basis, yes.
Absolutely, and, but I think that there should be permission. I mean, I think some people don't have the ability to clean it up, whether it's physically, they're sick, they, a lot of people have issues.
Well, we, we could do it with a hearing. There could have a hearing before we go.
I know. I, I wish you would have let me finish my, my statement. Um, but some peo- and, and those people might give us permission to do it. Other people are like, no, this is my treasure. This was my great grandpa's boat and it's an antique and I wanna keep it and
And those are.
Eventually I'm going to fix it up.
That's a what if situation, but with, with the majority of these cases, it's more than just a boat on property. It's twenty cars plus tires plus building materials plus et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, looking at it as, uh, a person is sick and can't afford it, we had that individual up before us when we had to, we last reviewed the fines and applying them towards the, their properties. And while we can, we can, uh, not apply those fines to those individuals on a case by case basis, it still stands that there's a problem, that there's junk in their yard, that, uh, it may be a blight, it, unfortunately, if a person is sick, a situation is still a situation that needs to be attended to. It's their property. It's their responsibility to keep it orderly in a fashion that complies with city codes.
And Suzanne, I don't think there's gonna be too many people who are gonna give you permission to come on their property and clean up their property and then have to pay a bill that they don't know about. Cause ultimately, they are going to have to pay the bill for us going on their property and cleaning it up. So it comes down to, do we give them their citation, their citation, their citation? Inevitably, nothing happens with those, cause there's some out there that have been out there for as long as I've been involved with the city, which is going on eight years. And, or do we figure out a way to clean things up? And it's not only, it's not only residents. There are some businesses out there too that need to be held accountable. So do we have a hearing? Do we go X, X, X in citations? And then we have an ultimate hearing where we can hear what's going on and if they either fail to show or whatever the case may be, can't provide us with the way they're gonna do it, then it could go into abatement.
And with this, this is not just for the property owners. This is protection of the neighbors as well. Because if there's an ugly looking property that has junk all over it, would you wanna buy a house next to it? Maybe, but, maybe, but probably not for full price. And, uh, so, well, if you had two houses and a neighbor right in the middle or half the neighborhood has their junk out, what are the property values gonna be in that neighborhood? So it's not just for protecting the city, it's protecting the residents and the investment that they have in their own properties.
I think property owners have rights too and.
They absolutely do.
This is violate, trying to violate their rights.
Well, I think if the state has a statute that covers it, I think the violation of rights has been covered by judges and people much smarter than I am.
I'd be looking at this as a last option, last resort, that citations have been filed.
They've exhausted everything.
Exhausted everything else and they are absolutely not going to comply. Then what can we do?
I don't think it's exactly our business. I think, like I said, a lot of these ordinances are way too stringent anyways and I think our residents should be able to live the way they want to live.
I don't want no junk here next to me, I'll tell you that.
I don't either.
I've got an expensive house and I don't want some house, some house dragging down my value, my house, cause he's got twenty cars and tires and.
And most of them, it's not the first time we've talked to them or the second time we've talked to them. This is not a, you have an antique boat sitting in your front yard. This is, you have a junkyard.
This is a two-year battle.
And a safety hazard with tires full of water and mosquito-borne. And, I mean, there's just, there's, there's a few of those out there in, in, out of compliance, I guess is the best way to put it, that we don't have any options on.
So.
But I'll agree with you. Exhaust everything else before you go to something like this.
Exhaust everything else, this is a last resort.
Yeah, the last resort.
And a hearing. Give them the opportunity to come in and say it.
Most people would probably do something before it gets to this.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I would propose at, say, our next work meeting or two work meetings, depending on how long it takes to develop, but have staff present a document or process of what would happen before this would, this would be done so that, that we can put into code so that there's been X amount of citations given, there's been a hearing with council, there's been this done, this done. And then this is the last resort. And it's to be carried out only by approval of city council.
And with that, if you could get them to put together a list of the properties that are currently possibly at this point.
So, but that's my suggestion if there's-
I'd like to know approximately what it would cost our residents to- And I don't know if you could give some possible quotes from anybody that we might contract out to go clean up? Give it, get an estimate of something that's current. So they can get an estimate.
As Brian said, it would be based on the situation of each property.
With the other cities that have this, do we know other cities, say, around us that have this?
Yes.
Would staff be able to contact those cities and get some idea of what it, what their costs have been for this?
And, and we, we can also, you know, provide some indications to staff based on, you know, past experience, what these have cost. But, but as you and dedicated councilman Mondo, it is, of course, very case-specific.
Yeah, case-specific, but at least that's a real-time number that we can look at rather than just guessing.
And from what I've seen and read in accounts from other cities that use this process, a lot of times, this is the motive and the incentive to get the property owner to act before this happens. Because this one does have some real teeth to it.
Yeah. So I'd like to see citations, a hearing before council with the said property owner, and then-
At the minimum. But I have lived in cities where if you don't mow your lawn and the city comes out, that's an abatement and they just fine you, period. You're done. If they have to mow your lawn, that's it and you have no say. We're not asking for that. We're asking for, we've given you multiple chances to do what you should be doing anyway for your neighbors, for the city, for your own sense of well-being. You should clean up. So, and if there isn't an extenuating circumstance, come see us. Come talk to us. We've made many exceptions.
Yeah, we don't know something unless we're told. But at least if we have staff put together something that we can review and that would get us one step further, I guess. Is there any opposition to?
We can certainly have some type of a proposal ready for the August work meeting to discuss the outline and the framework of this. We'll get something together and work with Chris to get something ready for that meeting and then we can go from there with it, however you want to proceed.
If it's, if it's okay with the council, I think it would be, this sounds to me like it would be becoming an abatement policy, like when the, when the abatement would be triggered. So I think we would likely set something up with, with staff that's in the form of a policy for the council to consider.
Yeah.
So would this be only the outside cleanup stuff? Is that what, this is all, this is just for outside cleanup or is this-
We have no concern over what's inside.
We've never gone inside any place that I know of.
I, I think I have, I think I have had stories of, or I think, I have heard stories of cities going in houses of hoarders and, and removing it in such cases where-
That's a mental illness, health issue.
Where there's a fire or if the police happen, go in the house and they see the conditions of the house, that they then pass the word on to the fire department and then there's a fire inspection. And so that other cities have done that for the interiors.
Well, and I'm pretty sure that comes off the health department. And once the health department gets involved, that's a whole different set of regulations.
But, but as far as what we are discussing here tonight, it'll just be for the exterior.
The state also has a hazardous building statute, which can be, applies in certain circumstances. I think as, as stated, we're talking more about nuisance properties. But there is a hazardous building statute that would apply if the building is so unhealthy or dilapidated that it becomes a major health risk.
I got one, one question here. You know, it says either city works or outside contractor. When you clean something up, do you have to keep the stuff you clean up? Or, you know, because some cities, in case people want it back?
For a certain period of time.
And I don't, you know, that's what I got an issue with, you know, are we going to start a junkyard next door here piling up stuff at public works? That's what I don't, you know, I don't want to see, so.
No, we would have to have some other place to store it, anything that's required for storage.
And also, that would be a cost.
Okay, okay.
Cost of the abatement that would be passed.
Okay.
It could be that with, if you have dumpsters out that the dumpster contractor can bring them back to the yard and-
Yeah, okay.
Have them sit for a period of time.
Any other comments? That's all you need, Jack, for that?
All I need.
Okay. And moving on to other staff reports. Jack?
I would just like to report in the newsletter, there was an article about the broadband work we've been doing and we invited people to respond to issues of either being underserved or not served. We've gotten several responses back so far. I would encourage anyone that's listening to this, if you have issues with internet in terms of your speeds and reliability, please contact City Hall. We'd like to identify some of those areas that may be future projects. The city could assist with midco and working to provide service to those areas. We'll be looking into that more. We'll be talking with midco at the EDA meeting in August to review some potential projects and what we can do to partner with them to look into providing some other service for some of these areas if we can identify those areas that are truly underserved and unserved that meet the FCC requirements. Even though it does show on midco's maps that most of the city shows it's being served, we know that there are pockets and areas within each one of those cells that aren't. So if you have problems with internet service or have no service at all, please contact City Hall and we'll get some information from you and start adding that to our list so we can start our database to prove that we have the data to show that these areas aren't served and maybe able to get some financial assistance to extend service in those areas. And at this time, Chris has got a little update that he'd like to give us, too, on some new legislation that's been passed to kind of update city council. On an interesting item that we may or may not want to take a look at.
Has anyone looked at the, the news recently? Well, as the council members are aware, a bill was passed at the Minnesota Legislature that allows certain hemp-based edible cannabinoids, cannabis, however you say it, are legal and broadly available. And there's very little restrictions other than the age of people who can buy them and the dosage for an individual edible and how many can be sold in the package. So at this time, I'd like to, as we're talking about this, introduce Christina Benson, who has recently joined Eckberg Glamours and is working in our municipal group. She comes from the League of Minnesota Cities and joined us from there and has been working with and involved in these discussions at the leagues about what options cities have to address these edible cannabis products. And Christina, could you take the council through some of their options?
Sure. So as Chris mentioned, there is no sort of regulation on these. It was originally, the department that it's assigned for is the Board of Pharmacy and they actually only have like twenty-five people on staff. So that's who's regulating it right now. The legislators who proposed this are hoping cities will start to license. But that's just a group of legislators, not necessarily the legislative as a whole. But most cities are right now just thinking about what they're going to do. And that's going to be up to the city how they want to do it. But a lot of cities are looking at tobacco licensing procedures and just applying that. There is a concern that if there isn't any sort of regulation, that you could create some legal non-conformities in your city and then you have to, you know, if you license or regulate them afterward, there's nothing you can do about those. So that's something to consider. As for regulating businesses, they're suggesting when contemplating what you want to put into your regulations, you know, what like deliveries are a thing where they, you know, kind of like Uber Eats, bringing cannabis products, samples, having things locked up, online sales, brick-and-mortar sales, self-service, self-checkouts. There's vending machines out there. Only certain retail businesses is some way that cities are looking at it. And also a limit on the number of licenses. Minnesota Department Health is putting together guidance for determining whether packaging is in compliance. So that's something that will help with enforcement once that finally comes out. And the League of Minnesota Cities is updating personnel policies. That's the other aspect is the HR. And they're going to have model policies updated for personnel, DOT and non-DOT drug testing and also drug-free workplace policies. Most personnel policies that are in place right now refer to Minnesota statutes. And if they refer to Minnesota statute, then it's no longer prohibited. So if they refer to the federal one, then they would be prohibited, which is an option. The League of Minnesota Cities has reached out to the Police Chief Association, so that angle is also being worked on. And there is a tri-county testing facility in Andover that has agreed to do some testing for certain organizations already. So hopefully, that will become a greater option for cities for enforcement and making sure that the products being sold are actually these Delta nine, I think, and the percentage of whatever that is. So options are licensing, regulating, time, place, manner, locations from schools and all of that. So, does anyone have any questions?
So it's better to get ahead of it instead of after that?
Yeah, so the land use attorney for the league, Jed, if you've ever worked with him, he, obviously, nobody knows. But the consensus at a work group of city attorneys put on by the league was that it could create legal non-conformities very quickly. And if you choose not to act, that might be something that happens. And the trend was, let's not wait and see and let's put together something just on top of tobacco. And there's also THC in drinks, seltzers are a thing now, THC seltzers. So it might also have implications in the alcohol licensing. But word on the street, according to the work group, is that if they have THC in them, sometimes they don't have alcohol contents. But I have no clue if that's a thing or not.
But so that'd be twenty-one to buy them, correct?
Yes. But something that's difficult for a prosecutor was in attendance at the meeting and he said that it's hard for officers to enforce it if there isn't a licensing scheme because they don't know who's selling it. So they can't do stings and things like that. It's only by happenstance that they go into a store and all of a sudden, something's on the shelf and then they can say, like, then they might do a thing. But, you know, to do a sting, you have to have someone under twenty-one and be prepared to do that. So it's really hard for them to be able to enforce that if they don't have some sort of regulatory scheme to rely on as far as businesses that are selling it.
And, yeah, I think that's, as it stands right now, you know, a knitting store could sell. Anybody can sell it. So whereas the city has X number of alcohol licenses and can go, as we've seen, we've done those compliance hearings, you know, this store's having some compliance issues. What steps are you going to take? None of that exists right now. So unfortunately, because that wasn't sort of planned out, it really is falling to each individual municipality to consider what to do. And I think one of the concerns is it's harder to take something away than it is to be out in front. And so we wanted to raise the issue. You know, we're, we're working on some model regulations that you can consider. We'll incorporate the ones from, I know, other entities as they come out. But, you know, it's, it's new and we wanted to definitely put it on your radar because it's, at this time, it is falling to cities to take action if there's going to be any regulation on your products.
I guess that's another agenda item for work meeting.
Yeah.
I have a question. Was the liquid THC approved in this thing or was it just edibles or?
It must be some form of liquid. I don't believe there's language about what form it's like food.
Yeah, as, as long as it's considered a food product, it's legal. So if it's drinkable, it would be legal. If it's inhalant, vape, it's not.
In other words, it's going to be everywhere. In any form anybody can create, it'll be out there.
It came out very quickly. It was kind of like, how did you get that so soon? Another thing to think about, obviously, very long-term, is there's going to be more manufacturing and there are certain cities that have experienced manufacturing without regulation and it's very odorous. There is some availability of comparisons to other cities of how they've managed operations that move into their cities for manufacturing.
Well, and there's so many states that haven't legalized that there should be stuff out there that can be used.
And, but that's, that's one of the things that's interesting. Christina, you mentioned this earlier today. Because most states have legalized it as a higher dosage, one of the concerns is it's going to come in-
At the higher dosage. It's like the three-two beer thing that only Minnesota has.
Yeah. Once it was approved, there's a whole lot of stuff on Facebook that was floating around that Minnesota approved the three-two of edibles.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it sounds like. But you know, the grocery store that sells everything else is going to want to have that and the convenience store that has locations in every other state is going to just think, hey, I can do it in Wisconsin, why can't I do it here?
Yeah, and I, you know, the, the only sort of time advantage, based on the fact that this is legal now and why we might have a little bit of time, is there's simply not enough product that meets the criteria at this point.
Right now.
Right now, exactly.
But there's no one testing it either. There's no state testing, there's testing requirements. Like if you get cited by someone, then they could test it, but they don't have to. And that's why I mentioned the facilities. Some facilities have said they're not going to be testing products. So there is one locally, which is nice for you guys.
Andover, but. So if the bakery around the corner, I mean, technically, if the bakery around the corner decided it wanted to get a hold of-
Some brownie mix.
Yeah, liquid THC and-
Well, it's only edibles.
But if they're making brownies.
Yeah, there are requirements for the, that MDH will come out with that has like requirements, things that can't look like, things that kids would like, certain packaging, it can't be colorful, things like that. So that also will hopefully slow things down a little bit because, but then again, we also don't have that regulation yet because I don't think even the Department of Health, the Board of Pharmacy didn't, I think they released something on June thirtieth. So just when everyone else was finding out.
Well, that's because it became legal July first, so we're eleven days into it.
Yeah, exactly. So a, a, anyway, we, we definitely wanted to talk about it tonight just because it's, it's going to come back.
Okay. Well, that's what I was, that's what I was going to ask with the information. Is this something within the next couple, two or three months, we should probably add or get something up and going?
I agree. Next work meeting.
Or sooner, next work meeting get going on that and?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Next work meeting.
It's obviously discretionary, but if you are going to do it, it would be.
Sooner the better, yes.
And address both selling it and manufacturing it.
Correct, yep. Is that it? Is that it, Jack?
That's all we have.
Okay. Um, council report. Suzanne?
Well, I just want to say that I am really excited about Booster Days this weekend and I hope everybody comes. I hope people are doing the medallion hunt and get your kids signed up for that other hunt and get those prizes. Don't we all love prizes? That's all I have.
Uh, Brian?
Our last EDA meeting, we talked about internet stuff. Planning meeting was canceled. ED, the EDA meeting this month is canceled and, but Booster Days is not. So looking forward to it.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, knock on wood. Looking forward to it and all the activities and, uh, want to stake, uh, thank Stephanie Doran for all her efforts in doing this and, and I, I didn't get the chance to ask her a question, but I, I assume city council members cannot hunt for the medallion?
I believe it says, not part of the city on there.
Shucks.
You can't be an employee of the city and be eligible to look for it.
Well, shucks.
Do you know where it is?
I know.
Um, I also want to thank Stephanie and her committee. It's a really small committee and they have, they have worked miracles against some things that came up at the last minute that everybody was scrambling on. Um, I also want to wish Mark the best. Uh, he will be missed. He's been an incredible asset to the city and he's been an incredible friend when I needed information and anything else. And lastly, I'd like to invite everybody, uh, Disc Golf on Thursday. That is this month's chamber meeting. Four to six at, I never remember what it's, Blue Ribbon Pines. Four to six this Thursday.
Is that the one over on Klondike?
Yep.
Yes.
Right down past Beaverbrook.
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
And I, I got a couple of things. Today, the fire department had, uh, pumping. It was, uh, setting up from like tankers and engines to, to the fire. They were running through some scenarios and, uh, secondly, is August second is National Night Out. If your neighborhood wants to hold a party, I think you get ahold of the county sheriff, don't you, Jack? So if you want to have a little party in your neighborhood, get the fire department, police department over there, uh, get ahold of them as soon as possible.
And if you don't know who to contact, call City Hall and we'll give you the information.
And with that, that's all I've got.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made. Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.